Boarding.
Alright, nothing now.
Can they, can they hear us now?
There's nobody on but these two. And Pam, three computers. Public has option to join us live now, well, in person. Okay. Can you hear us Greg?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Alright, we're gonna have this.
This. So Chad set up this fancy thing and I don't know how to run it. He could be.
How about now Greg? Can you say something?
Yep, I can hear you.
Hi Lothar.
Okay, I think we have all our members. Present at this time, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. A regular school board meeting Monday, February fifteenth, starting at seven oh two. First order of business is please rise for the point of allegiance. Point of allegiance to apply are the United States of America. Public for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, next order of business is roll call. Kirk, you? Ryan?
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
I'm here. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Redmond and Mr. Olson are not with us tonight. It was meeting properly notified.
Yes, it was and it is being broadcast in the corner.
Okay, do we have anybody that has any public comments at this time? They're hearing none will move on. Don't believe there's a highlight on you tonight. So. Comments by Board Superintendent Kim, do you have anything?
I don't know.
Okay. And. I don't have any at this time. Anybody else? Just one thing to remind the public if they're watching tonight or on the rebroadcast that we are allowing limited in-person at school board meetings. They should contact the district office if they want to know what the numbers are, how likely or unlikely it would be to be allowed. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on to the next item, which is our food service report by our food service director Tammy Climington. Our representative.
So you're welcome, we'll just move that microphone.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Is this okay?
Yep.
For you guys. Okay, yeah, good, okay. So, thank you for having me. I, I feel like I'm actually now in a rhythm that I've been here for two years in a row. So, that's really, that's big for me. So, thank you for having Tammy and I. We just wanted to give you a few highlights of the program this year. I was gonna start out with kind of some actual from a financial standpoint and then just talk just a little bit about some of the successes that happened this year. I know you guys see this in real time, so it's a little bit different for, for you all, but I carry quite a, quite a bit of pride about Tammy and her team here and what they do. It, it's quite remarkable how everybody stepped up, so. We have done, according to my books, and these are, I mean, I would say rocked compared, I mean, Jen and I need to sit down and, and confirm all of this, but year to date, I'm showing us at three hundred and eighty-one thousand, which is just about eight thousand behind what I had projected for your all sales last year. And again, these are Chartwell's numbers, so just want to make that very clear. Currently Tammy's running about a forty percent program cost at one fifty-two, eight sixty-five. Forty is my target date in a regular non-COVID year without the number of prepackaged or items that we're packaging. We could probably get that number down between thirty-six and thirty-eight percent, but with the, the amount of paper and/or individual packaged items that we're using, that's up just a little bit. And our personnel cost is at forty-two percent. Again, that forty is kind of my, you know, magic number as it goes to as far as labor would go within our, within the food service operation. And we are up a little bit. Again, just with the learning models and the packing and the way that we're displaying the food and, and serving the food, some of those things have changed for us. So they tend to be just a little bit more labor intensive, but Tammy's done really an amazing job at keeping it where it needs to be, a two percent difference on, you know, that much money is, is, you know, a drop in the bucket when we're taking care of our kids, so. You know, we obviously don't want to think that we're not managing your dollars, but there is going to be a little bit more just because of the learn, the way the model is, it's more labor intensive. But Tammy's done an excellent job. And then, of course, we have other costs which are sitting right about nineteen percent, and those are anything like our management fees, our, our management costs, any kind of training that we've done, telephone expense, software that we use, computer, you know, the computer maintenance, cleaning supplies, any of those kinds of things, so random. And again, that's right where it needs to be. So right now, we're showing the program as a positive of about seventeen thousand. I am pleased with any kind of positive result in, in my district anywhere in Minnesota or Wisconsin this year, just because of, you know, the way the learning models changed, having access to less students, not having access to do as many all apart sales as we're used to. I mean, just kind of all of those things. But then, of course, the positive side of that is we're getting more per meal and we're able to give kids free breakfast to everyone who wants it. So, you know, our breakfast sale would be up because of that. So, overall, I'm pleased with the way the program's running. I hope you all too. But I, I would like to point out that, you know, I just am, again, very proud of the program here and what Tammy's done with her team to, you know, make the distribution and the meals during the pandemic and to be able to adjust on a moment's notice and to always say yes, it's refreshing. And then, just also with her, you know, keeping the food service program as consistent as possible during this time, again, with all the changes. So, I, I would close in saying that, you know, we have a strong dedicated leader who's committed to the district and the staff. And I'm here to back her up. But is there anything else they can tell you about the program or you'd like to hear from Tammy about?
I don't know who you are.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry.
I mean, I, you're the Chartwell representative.
Yeah, I am, so.
I don't know who Chartwell is.
Oh, okay.
From what you said, you must be the.
Yes, so I'm sorry that I should have, let me take a step back. My name's Jerry Crater. I am a district manager for Chartwell's K through twelve. We are currently your food service vendor or contractor. And how many years have you been here, Tammy?
Twenty-two or twenty-three?
So, we really, it's not a long time to be, and I even be twenty-five. And I'm new to my role. I've obvious, I met Tim and Howard on, on many occasions. I believe I met Scott last year. Kirk, I believe I met last year. And we met last year. And so this is only my second year in, I'm, I'm been in my role a year and a half. So your district in actually all Minnesota and Wisconsin are new to me. But, so does that answer your question as far as who we are and what we do for you? So there's been a longstanding partnership there. That's highly important. So I'm assuming you're a new board member, so welcome.
That I'm just really dumb board member.
We have some new members.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, I, I just.
So you, you'll see me when, when and if you need me. My role is, my primary role is to back up Tammy and make sure that she's getting the support and direction she needs from the Chartwell's organization.
Yeah, but still, is it still, it's still free breakfast and lunch, isn't it?
Maybe you want to explain.
Yes, it's a, it's a free, the free lunch and breakfast to all students within the district.
Now that's secret.
And it's, it's, it's federal. And it's gonna go throughout the whole school year.
So we'll take that into the end of June. And it's kind of unprecedented, obviously, because of the pandemic. So we're very grateful the USDA passed that when we were starting, kind of, well, we didn't get that one for the school year until late in August, but then you're, then the state of Wisconsin has not given it. So it really does give us an opportunity to get meals into kids' hands that might not otherwise get it.
And is there likely that it'll end or is there discussion for any support for the following year from the federal?
So, of course, we wish that we could do this all the time just because of, you know, we see the need in our community. And families tend to, you know, not wanna participate in the free and reduced or the free programs and those kinds of things. So with this, you know, it's just, it's just a really, it's a gift. But what we're hearing is that it'll end at the end of this year, which would be June thirty. So, we would love to see it go into next year. I mean, if, you know, not knowing, of course, I wish I had a crystal ball, but we were hoping last summer when we were in the midst of it that they would take it into this school year. But, you know, we'd also like to be able to bring some more stuff back to the kids. And so depending upon how they relax those regulations, but it would be nice, I mean, it would be nice if we could stay with this feeding model all the time. Be great for communities, Anthony.
When I look at our enrollment numbers, we have almost a third of our virtual education students enrolled in groups. How does that work? Since a lot of those students, I don't believe, are even here in our area. How, how does that work?
So there's a couple of different things, and I'm gonna speak to one point, then I'm gonna turn it over to Tammy. So, with the way the waiver is written, they can go to their, literally to their closest school and participate in their meal program. So they've really taken away any barriers that we have to feed the kids, whether it's geographical or, I mean, anything, right? Like if, if you wanted to go to the next school district over because you like their meal box better than maybe what we're producing here, we hope you don't, but it happens. Then, then you can certainly do that, or there are hours for pickup, work in your family's schedule better, or any of those kinds of things. So, the whole idea is really to get food into kids' hands in any way, shape or form that we can. Some districts and everybody does it a little bit different. It really does depend upon your leadership and what you're looking for, but what the USDA does allow us to do is do meal boxes and they can come and pick them up. They just can't double dip. Like if their kids are in school two days, they can't get a seven day box or, you know, those kinds of things. So, we've really just tried to open it up, be able to touch as many kids as possible. So it really is, at the end of the day, it's their choice. You can't make them take it.
What the communities where our open and all students come from.
And it was.
Way that Tammy's gonna get milk from it.
No, yeah, that's what I mean. So they can just literally go to their.
Can you change it up? You know, how big is your region, how many schools are in your region? And then how many of those are like in person full-time?
So I have eighteen districts. And I have six in Wisconsin and twelve in Minnesota. So I'm literally kind of all over both states. So I go all the way over to, you know, like the Green Bay side, Appleton, Manassia, those districts over there, and then, of course, I'm pretty far west in Minnesota, so, and south. And, and every, honestly, Tim, every learning model's a little bit different. The focus out there seems to be getting kids back in school. I will tell you that you all are ahead of the game as far as, A, keeping your kids in school and then getting them back or dealing with any kind of outbreak. I have some districts that are still, I would say, maybe, I mean, we'll be lucky if the secondary kids come back at the end of May or March, so. You know, we want to see kids in school. I mean, it, it just is our mission.
Provide meals for most part, kind of like we did last spring?
Yes, and so we do a lot of that. We're still doing a lot of boxes in our, the ones that I'm gonna tell you, I mean, are, that are doing most being most successful with it are the ones who are literally putting those boxes on their buses and taking them out into the communities. We've found that they don't want to come and get them, you know, I mean, it's, it's been difficult to, I mean, if we have it, you know, them there waiting for them, we don't get the distribution numbers that, that we would have liked to have seen. So, we're, every learning model I have. So some are just back, you know, like K through three, some are next week bringing back four and five, and then, you know, they're going into progression. But I would say probably a good third of my schools don't have their secondary.
More questions for Tammy, Greg? I guess, I could comment that I'd like to commend Tammy for the wonderful job she's done. She did stuff like forward last spring. Almost a year ago, this whole thing started and I remember leaving that first Saturday get all our ducks on our own shutout. She has done a pretty amazing job of getting the food out to the community. Putting packs and keeping everybody safe. And for providing good and courteous meals for the schools throughout the year. We've been able to keep going and do in-person school with what the community wanted. Keep us safe, which is what the staff wanted. May not necessarily be all the traces that everybody wants. Really appreciate that, but may have for the board, I'll, I'll thank you for the job.
Thank you. Thank you, Howard, that means a lot to us. I mean, it, it, the amount of work is, is remarkable. We're lucky, lucky to have her.
It doesn't go on no.
Well, thank you. Nice to hear it. Yeah, and I have got, I can't tell you the excellent staff I have. I just have been very fortunate to have very dedicated staff too, because they're all willing to do whatever it takes to get stuff done, so.
Yeah, we truly appreciate that, but.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Well, thank you for allowing us to be your partner. We really appreciate it. Obviously, you know, Tammy's there for whatever you need, and I'm just the phone calling.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you guys for having me.
Hey, Tammy. It's your first trip, right?
Yeah.
The whole town.
Yeah.
Bit more.
Up north, the brother, depending on where you. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda. Financial reports from my treasurers back to growth.
Bank account balances as of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Citizen state checking, five hundred sixty thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars, twenty-three cents. Citizen state money market, three million, twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred eight dollars, fifteen cents. Citizen state money market fund, forty-six, fifty-three dollars, five cents. Citizen state bank money market suicide prevention fund, sixteen thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars, forty-seven cents. Total bank account balances of three million, six hundred and six thousand, three hundred and four dollars and ninety cents.
With that, we have the, what we would like to do with the treasury report. Motion to accept the treasurer's report as presented. Motion Kirk, second. And a motion Scott, second. Brian, to accept the treasurer's report as presented. In further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the consent agenda, which consists the approval of our meeting minutes from our January twenty-fifth meeting February eighth meeting. Approval of the bi-monthly bill for February twenty twenty-one. Approval of recognition of retirements of Don Moan, sixth grade social studies teacher. Sherry West, our third grade elementary school teacher. And approval of curriculum modification requests, the rule of full-time and part-time virtual ad, which consists of one full-time student. Yeah, who was presented?
Second.
The motion is second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. I would also like to offer congratulations to best wishes to both Ron Moan and Sherry West for many years of well-dedicated service at St. Craig's Central with teachers. Was a guest and now becoming retired. Congratulations to those two. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is our student enrollment update.
This month, February, we have one thousand four hundred and ninety-two students in seats. And as compared to four eighty-two from last month, and then with some of the students that came back from virtual school at semester time. Speaking of lunch, free and reduced lunch rates at twenty-three point zero nine percent, so that's twenty-three percent of our students that have families that have applied for free or reduced lunch and qualified for that. Or thirty-seven point five. Nice.
I usually run between thirty-five and forty.
Regarding the open enrollment, we have three hundred and seventy-three students open enrolled in. You can see in the bottom right-hand corner, two hundred and seventy, though, two of those are in our virtual school, one hundred and one are in seats. And we have again, two hundred and seventy-two in our virtual school, open enrolled in, one hundred and sixty-five are district residents, attend virtual school, full-time, and thirty-seven are. Again, thank all the ladies that work on this, work monthly to get it down back, so very important for a number of things, especially the finances. So thank you, Linds, for very detailed effort for.
So. And we're doing most of that. Okay, are there any questions with regards to the student enrollment update? If hearing none, we'll move on to the staff, student and community recognition.
Devin Losley, congratulations on being selected as a first team member of the twenty twenty-one middle border all conference wrestling team. Dean Holzer, Tatum Holzer, and Josh Bear. Congratulations on their selection as middle border second team all conference wrestlers. David Olson, Owen Losley, Parker Shackleton. Congratulations as they were selected as honorable mention members of the middle border all conference wrestling team. And then Jacob Sanders, congrats Jacob on being selected as a first team all conference middle border defense or defenseman for the twenty twenty-one season. There's a blue line and a red line, or anything to grease.
They play on skate.
I know that. I didn't know if it was.
It's just as hard as a basketball, boy.
It's worse.
Okay.
So congratulations to all.
Thank you to those that submitted those names and congratulations to the students for the recognition for their hard work. Also request that keep those recognition, commendations coming in.
Okay, question?
Yes.
It just sparked that, I, I know that we had someone come in and present and ask kind of about the, the lettering last spring. There was a decision, but I thought we were gonna do a follow-up kind of later. I thought Brian was gonna come back to us, because there was gonna be another discussion.
Yeah, and I think that, I would anticipate that coming back probably next month.
Could be coming back more towards that season. Okay.
Yeah. If the middle border conference doesn't make a decision on that.
Okay.
Really.
Okay, I, I wasn't, I just remembered that, it just, it's been a blind side of. Remember what it was.
I think it's a valid point. Here I can see, like I said, the grenade, I didn't know when.
Okay.
Chapter three, the end is, we had one of our student athletes in on Sunday. Will distress. The seniors last spring needed our discredited strength support. It was Haley. That's the act of the order that the letter was, you know, the box one, we're not. Four years. Of letters. We, that we would discuss it and we could get, get those that qualified discredited in this upcoming spring, that way or it's from that spring that discredited the latter that season. Well, that's where that discussion went. And there hasn't been any final decision.
It just sparked there. Three minutes.
With that on the back.
Time's just fine, with a little problem.
Okay. Okay, then we will move on to the next item, which is an update on our long-term capital improvement plan.
So each year, in order to keep our fund forty-six account active, we are required to approve a capital improvement plan. So the plan that is in front of you is updated from last year. Mostly the highlighted items are just updating the year, but some things were set to be replaced in twenty twenty and obviously now we're into twenty twenty-one, so we've moved them forward a year. Two things I do want to point out is under the flooring schedule for the middle school, we did add some tile in room two oh two instead of carpeting, so that room is now tiled. And then out at the. And then out at the high school, that hallway that goes back behind the library has also been replaced, and that was added on here. Everything else was already on here and just updating. If you flip to the last page, you can see the cost by year. And the total amount of the projects that are on the list. Right now, we have fifty three dollars and five cents in the account, so. It's not gonna go far, but um, we are able to spend those funds now if we want to. Or we can leave them in there and hopefully add to them in the future.
Just being the answer, anybody watching this tape at home, this is kind of the history of one forty six and. The requirements that we got.
So, fund forty six was implemented about six or seven years ago. Actually, I think it was six years ago, and so we decided to open up a fund forty six account so that. You know, at the end of the year, we have all our expenditures for the year, we have all our revenues that come in, and we have budgeted amounts. And they don't always equal, so this would be a way that we could set aside money for facility type projects. And we wouldn't have to spend them by June thirtieth of that given year. We would be able to transfer it over to the next year and have more time to spend those funds.
And funds part of it, fund forty six had to be started in that year to take advantage of it, had we started and funded, if I remember that.
It didn't have to be started in the first year, but you had to wait five years from the date that it was originally started. So that fund is funded is through surplus funds. We could designate a portion of our budget to put in there if we wanted to, it's just a capital. Yeah.
Right, but historically, we have to spend everything in the year to get it. This is only way that they've given us the push. To store funds until you have enough to pay for a project.
Got a motion on second, I've got a couple of questions for Greg. You hear me, Greg?
Yep, I can hear you.
I saw that there were a couple of projects for roofs to replace them at the elementary school. Uh, where are we on that as far as condition of that roof?
The two roofs at the elementary is the art and music room roof. And the kindergarten roof. They're in uh fairly good shape right now, uh, but um. I haven't got any bids or anything like that yet. Um, they're, they're doing okay. Um, our neighbor's trees are. Are eroding the kindergarten roof quite badly, so I'm worried more about that roof. More than the other one.
Okay, are there any other uh projects on the list that you feel are in critical need? At this time?
Um, there are a um. One of, one of the things that I'd like to do, that's never really been on a list, but over at the bus garage. There's a little shed over there. That uh is a wooden shed. And it stores a little bit of Brian's equipment and our ground screw equipment. It sure would be nice someday if we could uh knock that down and replace it with a. More sturdy building that would uh serve us better there. It wouldn't be too awful much money, but it it would be nice to replace that.
That's something our construction classes could do.
Excuse me, I didn't hear that.
Is that something our construction classes at the high school could do? And trade classes?
Uh, it's a possibility, um, we would have to. Um, have it knocked down, we could have a company come in to knock it down. Um, we'd have to, there's electricity that's attached to it. Have the electric company take that away. Have it knocked down, and it could be a project that. Uh, they could do, we'd have to pour a new slab of cement for it. Yeah, it could be done.
Okay, I will take that into consideration.
Yes, yeah, that'd be nice.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept the. The report presented to us. Any further questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is consideration of structure and borrowing. And I'm gonna turn that over to you.
All right, you should have the loan documents in front of you as a handout. Um, where I went to the bank, because we have five million dollars worth of debt service payments that are due at the end of this month. So right now, or the past couple of months, we've been receiving all of our tax levy money. And that's been coming in, and then by March first, we have these debt service payments are due. So this year, because of our large prepayment that we're doing. And the way that we refinanced our debt, we weren't able to push it off until later in the summer, so like last year. We did our prepayment in June, so then we wouldn't have to borrow. Because of the refinancing, we weren't able to do that again this year. So right now, we have about three point six million, Tina said we received another one point four million today, so. By the time we get all our tax money and we'll have enough to cover our debt payments. And we should have a little bit to cover that first payroll in March. But we're probably not gonna have enough to get through that second payroll. We receive our state aid payments. And our per people adjustment aid both on March twenty second, I think it is, whatever that Monday is. And so that's kind of our target date that we have to get to. So I went to the bank and had them draw up the papers. Um, this one is a little bit different than what we've had in the past. Um, Steve set it up for us as a line of credit. So that we can access it through June thirtieth, because sometimes the beginning of June, we also have to borrow. And so this would make it so that we would be good till June, if we did need to borrow again in June, we would be able to do that without any further action from the board. Obviously, I would come back and let you guys know if we, if we are needing to do that.
That would be, that would be appreciated.
Yeah.
Well, if there's no prepayment, but it's a line of credit, if we. Take three hundred thousand against the line of credit. That's not payable, and it's payable, I'm not sure. But there is, but we're not allowed to prepay.
We can prepay.
Yeah.
So we can take, we can take money out as we need it.
Okay, this says we can, and this number two?
The way Steve explained it to me is that we could borrow whatever we needed, so let's say. For that first payroll in March, we need a hundred thousand, maybe we don't need the full six hundred. We could borrow a hundred. And then when we get to the March twentieth payroll, we could borrow the other five hundred if we need it. And then once we get our state aid, we pay that back. And then in June, if we need to borrow again, we would be able to borrow those funds again. Because they would be paid. So it'd be kind of like.
Well, I knew Scott, that's not what it says. That might be what they're willing to do, but that's not.
It's, it's a question that I've questioned before.
Yeah. That's how he is, that's how he explained it, so. So otherwise, I believe the document is the same as, as what we had. Um, if you remember last, I think it was at the November. Board meeting, we approved a short-term note. So that was a little bit different, in that we could only borrow from it once, once it was paid back, that was the end of it.
Is that a better way to do it, when we do a lot of credit? I mean, I'm just thinking like.
It is if we only need, if we know what we need, we need it once, right, but this.
Right, yeah.
This is more open-handed for the duration, so we don't have to do multiple.
Yes.
Um, closing costs and multiple um documents and approvals.
There are no costs for the loan.
No front-end.
No front-end cost, just the interest costs. I think Steve felt that this would serve our needs the best, seeing there might be a possibility that we will have to borrow again in June. And then he wouldn't have to go through, because he has stuff on his end that he has to get it approved too. So this is saying, okay, it's approved, we're good through June thirtieth. If we need to borrow from it more than once, we are able to do that.
Yeah, and because it expires June thirtieth, for these things that have to be approved at the end immediately. Okay. Everybody have a chance to read this yet?
So that was our.
That gave authority to do this.
That's a pinup, so that, that we already did the last two pages and so. I just, I mean, I just question that. I don't feel strongly about it either way, which is whether. Whether we should have a line of credit. You know, I mean, just the ability to access the funds at any time, and you give it, to me, that makes a lot of sense. In a business, but should that be something that we do as a school district, so that we have the ability to do that, you know, I mean, I just. Or should we be required that every time this happens? You know, have that, I I don't know. Let's raise that issue, feel strongly on that.
Well, the district has given us. Electors has given us the authority to borrow. I think this year. Before we move up to the immediate shoots here. You know, for me, whether we put it on the line of credit, or we have to demand.
Yeah, mine is just a policy question, I mean, it certainly makes a lot of sense, we'll just.
Well, it can't be accessed unless it's, unless there's actual action taken. So it's not like, it's not like. Two months from now, Devon can go in there and decide that the district needs two hundred thousand dollars on a line of credit. And then it does, it's supposed to come to the board, the board has to. Approve that we're doing it.
Not with the high credit.
Please you can go get it.
Right, yeah. Yep.
But it would be payable to the district.
That's right. So I could call them up and say, for the April twentieth payroll, and we need two hundred thousand dollars. And then they would deposit that into the district's account. To cover that. And the district would be liable for the interest cost for that. And then I would come to the board and say, we needed to borrow to make payroll, this is how much it costs. Or if we can do it in advance, you know, depending on the timing of board meetings. Then I could let you guys know ahead of time, I always would let Howard know ahead of time. And if there was anyone else that wanted me to let them know ahead of time, I can certainly do that.
So your expectation is that we would pay. A draw on this, and then the second draw. If we need it for the, the next, next payroll. And what do you anticipate would be the? Biggest amount we would pay out, probably not all six hundred thousand?
We probably are gonna need all six hundred.
Okay, for that other payroll.
Right. Because we're about five hundred thousand per payable.
And that would be in?
March, yes.
And then our proceeds come.
The twenty second.
So theoretically, in that case, we could pay it back right away.
Yeah. It's really just a few days, because that payroll is on the nineteenth, that's that one day.
That's where I saw. Number two, on the front page of the calendar. That we can't pay it back.
Yeah. And I asked him about that too, and he's, that was how he explained it to me, so. I can certainly go back.
Has it read the same, if I brought this up every time?
Every time, and it's the same clause that's been in there. They're questioning the same thing.
Well, the bank can waive that restriction.
Yeah, if in practice, if in practice, and if by. We all know where it is today.
Yeah, we don't want to be amongst you guys, we're gonna get a lot of shit in there. Okay, are there any other questions? The way they entertaining a motion for approval. Okay, I have a motion, Scott, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second, Brian.
Honorary note. Borrowing of six hundred thousand dollars has authorized. A difficult electors resolution. Be the line of credit, so.
Is it your recommendation that this, that you prefer this line of credit for your operations?
I think it actually makes sense, just because I do think we are going to need to borrow a little bit in June again. So instead of going ahead with paperwork now, paperwork again in June. We can do it once, I can let you guys know, we do have to borrow in June. We won't have to go through the process again.
And you're, and you're representing them, it's not that we're gonna take it out of March and not pay it till June thirty.
No. Yeah.
Part of the problem, the end, that we're funding the way it is.
I understand you.
They, they don't divide it up into equal portions.
Well, this takes you a few hours of time to go through all of this each time.
You gotta talk to Steve, that's your.
That is.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there any other further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
So just a, a quick thought for next year. Um, you know, after the annual meeting, would it be something you guys would be interested in, in doing? A line of credit? Again, like we could do it in August or September, and then we wouldn't really have to worry about it for the year? Or would you rather wait until we actually need to borrow? And then do a.
I personally think it makes more sense to wait until there's clarity on, on what the timeline and what, what might, what the issues might be.
Because we did have one year where we didn't.
Every once in a while, we do, yeah. And now this year is twice because of payroll timing and money when it's coming in compared to when most payrolls are.
That was the year we passed the referendum, right, we were able to use those funds somehow, could we go with genetic?
No. Referendum funds are always kept separate. That might have been. I think that's what you're thinking of, yeah, with the fire proceeds, because they have given us a certain amount. I think that's what you're thinking of, yeah, was the fire proceeds, because they have given us a certain amount. Upfront. Yeah. But no, anytime we have referendum proceeds, those things, Scott, those are always kept um in a completely separate vein.
There's another very difficult one too, right, repayment of that timing impact as well?
Those are, yeah, the the actual debt service payments are always due at the same time. But last year, we did a prepayment, and this year, we're doing that prepayment as well. So that's where we usually have a little bit of flexibility, but we didn't this year because it was part of that whole refinancing of the nineteen million. So we had to pay, we have to pay that out on February twenty eighth. Actually, it's the twenty sixth, because of the way that we've been held, but. So we didn't have as much flexibility this year as we did last year.
Okay. I think we've handled that, so moving to the next item on the agenda, which is designate twenty twenty one higher education academic excellence scholarship recipient to the board policy for sixty one. So. Uh. The motion for Travis Madigan. Dating that awardee for the academic excellence scholarship. Going to Peyton Holder. Uh the policy that will go to the award recommended awardee or the next one on the list. With that, uh that policy, we need a motion to accept. Awarded young master holder.
Second.
There are the Martian Kirk, second Scott. Award. Got higher education academic excellent scholarship. Peyton Holder.
Lovely, I'm down going. But I wish that that's at what Roxanne's saying.
I mean, yeah, this is crazy. Ties on broken, ties on broken, ties on broken.
So, uh congratulations, Mr. Holder, for uh your hard work in academic. Okay, our next one, our next item on the agenda is to designate a twenty twenty one Wisconsin technical education technical scholarship. And Mr. Madigan is recommending that recipient is Madeline Anderson. Give me a motion. Okay, there are a second?
Second.
There are motions, Brian, second Kirk, award these technical excellence scholarship twenty twenty one to Madeline Anderson. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Madeline, on the hard work and technical excellence. We wish Madeline Anderson the very best in the future. I guess it would be proud. Okay. With that, is there any other business we need to cover? Okay, hearing none. Uh important upcoming dates, we can see March first, we have a board running meeting here at six thirty. March fifteenth is a regular board meeting at seven PM here in the district office. And with that, we need a motion to go in a closed section for Wisconsin State statute nineteen eighty five one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment in public funds, or to conduct another specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require or expect. This is to discuss possible hiring of.
What's the question?
Good. Second. Okay. There are more for Brian, second Scott, you ready? Okay. Brian.